Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the order, the June twelfth, twenty twenty five, uh, regular meetings of the Red Manchester Shortsville Central School District Board of Education. Everyone, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, as a quick note, I just wanna say thanks to everyone who joined us. Uh, we gotta get through a few quick items and then we're gonna jump into, um, an opportunity to celebrate some, some great milestones and achievements within the district. So, um, thank you very much for those of you who are here for, uh, to take part in that. And also I'll just mention now, uh, once we do that, we'll pause, have a moment to, um, you know, do some congratulatory handshakes and things. And then, uh, folks that may not wanna stay for the whole meeting, you're of course, um, free to take off if you prefer. So, um, no hard feelings if you do. With that, uh, we'll quickly do minutes. So, let's see here, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to education law, approves the May eighth, twenty twenty five, regular Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. Motion from Chelsea, second, Jen. Uh, any questions on the minutes? Alright, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Timmy doing a little over there?
Yep.
Alright.
We're good.
Uh, Haller being doing there. Alright, uh, thanks, everybody. And then we've got minutes to certify for the budget vote. So Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to education law, approves the May twentieth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six budget vote minutes as presented.
Okay.
Motion from Chelsea and a second, Scott. Thank you, sir. Any questions on that one? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. And then we would move to public comment. Do we know? Oh, do we have a few sign-ins?
We have some visitors sign in.
I mean, they're welcome to speak, of course. If your name's on there, you have the option. Okay, we're good. Alright. I don't know, it's a sign-in. Alright, well, thank you. Um, we'll move forward then. Alright, um, so we're gonna go ahead and um, do our personnel item here. So, um, and then after that, we'll address some of the things that were in this, uh, personnel agenda. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools in pursuant to education law, approves the consent agenda items as presented. So this is for personnel. Can we get a motion? Chelsea and a second from you. Alright, all in favor? Aye. Is that it, buddy? Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Alright, thank you. Awesome. Well, um, with that, yep, we are gonna do, so we have several things we wanna cover here. Um, the first of which is a handful of retirement. We had several. And we're always grateful for, uh, when our, our retirees and their families, uh, come to, uh, join us to just take a moment to celebrate and appreciate, uh, your commitment to the district. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Weller to, um, to, uh, extend some congratulatory thoughts.
So, uh, we have six retirements we're gonna celebrate tonight. Three of the retirees have joined us. So I'm gonna start with the three who aren't here first. Uh, Sue Bailey, um, started here back in September of ninety seven, retired in December. She was hired as a teacher aide originally, um, then started working in the, the tech area in twenty sixteen. So she was here when I started. She was one of the, the people that she and Nate really helping me out with understanding how tech is done here. Uh, it's very different from other places. They're right here on site. They're accessible to everybody all day long. But Sue was also the elementary school yearbook advisor for multiple years and an athletic supervisor. And, uh, as I came to understand it, Shannon's right hand. So, um, Dee Kuhn is a science teacher who joined us, uh, just a couple of years ago, September of twenty twenty three. She's retiring, uh, but she's been a specialized teacher. Uh, she's also certified in biology. So last year, she actually taught a specific, um, biology class to some kids who needed that. The third retiree who isn't here tonight is George Rebus. Uh, George joined us in, uh, January of twenty three. He's a teacher aide, but, um, most, most of our students know him because he was either, uh, kinda running ISS last year. So hallway supervision, study hall supervision, uh, but he's also, uh, one of the, the coaches, one of the mentors for the track club. The three retirees that are here, I'm gonna start with the one closest to me, Mr. Robert Good. Bob give a wave. If anybody in this room doesn't know him, it's one of the students who's here from the admin program. Everybody knows Bob. Uh, oh yeah, that's right, Eric, you would know him.
I graduated in the trucker.
There you go. So, uh, Bob started working here in August of twenty eighteen. Again, most of our kids know him. He, he wasn't a teacher, but he was involved in most kids' lives, um, running study halls, uh, you know, since I got here, Bob is just a beloved figure. Uh, I know he's also very involved in youth sports, uh, with boosters. Um, always saw him over at the, the field, uh, in the snack shack, working all the time. Um, I never did find out, when I started here, we get T-shirts for all the staff members, uh, for opening day. And when I talked to Sue about it, I said, where did the shirts come from? She said, from Bob Good. I said, where does Bob get them? She said, he won't tell me. So, I'm hoping we can still get some shirts this year. Um, Patty Green. Patty? Good boy. Um, Patty's not only a graduate from here, but she has worked here since
Don't put her on the spot there.
August of nineteen eighty four was when she was first hired. Uh, she's been a, a teacher aide. Most kids, I think, assume she's one of the OS, one of the, the clerical staff. She really, she's played a massive role in, uh, the high school office, at least since I've been here. I, I think most of the time you've been here supporting the counselors, supporting the high school, uh, students and office and teaching staff. It's a really long time, Patty, that you've been here. You are like the fabric of what goes on. It, you know it and we know it. So, um, Patty did say though, she, she does wanna be a substitute coming back for us, uh, when she's retired. And next to her, Diane Hay. Diane came to us from, was it from Klein Savannah?
Yep.
Yeah, I thought I had seen that. Uh, January of eighty nine, um, she's taught, uh, elementary and middle school, both, right?
Special ed and middle school.
Yep.
And high school.
I, I didn't realize there was high school in there as well.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, alright. Um, but I also saw you had, you were an advisor for the student store in the middle school. And I didn't realize we ever had one of these, the bowling club.
Yes, we have the bowling club and stuff.
Okay. So, um, if you would, the, the three retirees that are here, I know you guys are gonna wanna take a few moments and shake their hands. Uh, do you, you wanna run through the other?
Yep. Yep, it's okay. We have a couple of things to do here.
Couple of folks to recognize.
But can we get a round of, if you're, can we get a round of applause at least?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna come up here for a minute. That's alright. We, uh, as part of that personnel, um, series of personnel, uh, updates that we just approved, in there was, um, a tenure appointment. We've done a few of those for our, um, teaching staff. And I think in my tenure here on the board, it's the first time we've done it for administration. Is that, I think so, right? At our high school, we've been through a lot of change. We've been through a lot as a district. There's a lot of visibility. There's a lot going on. It's an important time for our kids. And, um, that particular role, uh, we need, we have a lot of situations where we need strong leadership in this district. But I would argue that the high school is probably one of the most visible, one of the most important leadership roles we've got. Uh, we've been very fortunate to have a gentleman, Mr. Brian George, in that role for several years now. And, um, uh, Brian has local roots here in the district, graduated from a nearby district. Yeah, um, family, uh, even to this day, I'm still learning about new folks that are related to Brian. But, uh, um, I, I wanted to just take a minute and, uh, and just say thanks, Brian, all you've put into your role to growth both professionally and, uh, within the building and on behalf of the district. And, um, and thank you for working so closely with the board. And, uh, so congratulations to Mr. Brian George.
No, thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
I actually ran the Mac at Target and we got talking and I told Matt, I go, now you're sucking me. And Matt goes, Brian, I expect you're actually gonna hurt more if you don't retire from it.
I'll be next year.
Congratulations and thank you. And last but not least, we, uh, I'll just say quickly and then I'm gonna turn it over to Chris. But we have had such an excellent experience, uh, both last year and now this year with our, uh, student representatives to the Board of Education. Um, Randy and Michaela, you two have done an absolutely outstanding job this year. Um, our pioneers last year did a great job. You've now set the bar higher. Uh, and you've been great to work with, to have here. Thank you so much for your contributions. And, uh, you know, we as a board and as a district just wanna say thanks for all you've offered over the course of this past year.
So, um, as has been shared, you know, we've spent the last two years learning how to develop student board members. You know, we're one of the first districts in the region to take on that challenge. Um, and we've been lucky enough, last year, to have two students pilot that with us. And as I shared with you guys, um, people don't know the amount of work that goes into it for these two young folks and things that they're involved in, and the amount of work that goes on top of what they're already doing. Um, monthly, they spend at least an hour with Mr. George and I, um, trying to keep us to, keep us in line as we work through what we wanna discuss each meeting. And, um, they had some of the most forward-thinking ideas this year, um, that moved us forward, uh, in student voice. From the suggestion box, which they're gonna talk about today, to tying in the car, the, our car newspaper, which they're gonna talk about today, to being involved in the, uh, the, the process of bringing in new student reps who we have here tonight that we're gonna talk about shortly. So Michaela and Randy, I'm gonna ask you to come up. We have something, we have a gift for the both of you. We have a plaque that you can take with you, a man card from the district to say thank you for your, your service this year. And you're gonna be very hard to replace. So, thank you both.
Alright, and, um, opportunity there to, um, you know, to appreciate folks that have given a lot to the district and, and just share some positivity and some, some great, um, acknowledge some milestones. So, excellent. Uh, we'll keep moving with the meeting here. Um, at this point, we're gonna move to our presentations. And first up is our student update.
Um, good evening. Thank you all for coming. Uh, to start off the night, I would like to highlight the Special Olympics that happened at the end of last month. As you can see, there are images up here. Both Randy and I did attend this, just to let you know. Um, this event was held at Marcus Whitman with schools from all over. There were tons of buses and tons of different kids from all different kinds of schools. Um, there was, like, within this event, there was a track event, um, which contained things like the, um, four hundred meter and long jump. Um, there was a softball event. There was also a superheroes event, which was just all these different kinds of activities. And they called it superheroes 'cause they had these superhero masks that they could wear. And they just went out to all these stations and just basically freely did what they want, um, obviously with supervision. Um, and the high school mentors that attended this were Randy and I and also Mallory Lockwood and Connor Cummings, which I saw come in here. Um, and they were assigned groups in the library. And then we all loaded onto the bus with our assigned groups, um, to supervise them and also encourage them along the way throughout the event. Um, I was recommended for this event because I work and take care of kids, um, from all ages between newborns to sixth grade. So Randy thought it was a good idea that I attended this event as I do with kids every day.
I just didn't wanna be alone.
Um, this event was definitely something that I've never seen before. Um, and I feel it is a great opportunity for the kids to explore all different kinds of activities. Um, and it's also a great way for them to interact with other kids from different schools and to socialize. Um, it was also a great way to get them just active and outdoors, which was really nice. Um, next, I will address some of the things that will continue with the new board members, um, for next year. The suggestion boxes will continue. Um, when they will keep up with the weekly prompts that we wanted to input, but we kind of struggled with that because of testing. We couldn't have announcements and it just didn't really line up the way we wanted to. Um, but with them coming into the new school year, within those months before testing, it'll work perfect for them. So it'll be ten times easier. Um, and they're also going to keep engaging with the students and keep up the talk about the suggestion boxes so that we have an increase of numbers of responses. Because over time, if you talk to the kids once, they'll be really interested in it. But then if you don't really talk about it as often, it's not the top, on the top of their head. They have other things to think about, which is fair, so do I. But it's keeping up with it, making sure that they, um, still have knowledge that it's a thing. Um, also, we are going to keep it into the Cardinal Press. And the way that we're going to do, to do that is with our responses with these suggestion boxes, um, the way that we're handling that and how we're talking to you guys about it, we're gonna put that into the Cardinal Press, um, newspaper as just like a little snippet on the side just so that they know that we are mentioning it to you guys and their concerns are being heard. Cause some kids don't really understand it if they're getting that kind of feedback and they don't really know how to get that feedback. And a good way to do that is through the Cardinal Press. Um, and lastly, as this is the last board meeting that Randy and I are at, um, I would like to reflect this experience and what it has taught me. Um, overall, this experience, this experience has greatly improved my public speaking skills, as some of you have may heard. Um, this is something that I'd always struggled with and I thought I would never be able to overcome it, ever. Um, but this year, hold on, sorry, lost my train of thought. Um, this year, standing up in front of you all really made me less nervous and felt more prepared for things that are going to happen within the future. Um, and I feel as if I can speak to all different kinds of groups, no matter who's in them, no matter the age or the environment. Um, and this experience has also put in perspective time management skills and how I can improve on that.
It's a lifelong endeavor, by the way.
This definitely put it into perspective. Yes, um, having time management will greatly help me in the future because I am known as a procrastinator by my mother and also people at the school. Um, and the, um, there was like many positives within this experience, but that was one of the learning lessons for me. And one of the positives was the communication on our team with Mr. Bernard and Mr. George. Um, it was always very clear on what was expected and how both Randy and I were going to achieve that goal, which was really nice because we just knew what we had to do and how to get that done and in a timely manner. Um, this experience has so many positives, but it also comes with some challenges, just as everything does in life. Um, I would say the main challenge was, um, around the time of AP exams and other AP exams, it was difficult to keep up with the work of not only studying for that, but also keeping on top of this. And that follows in with the weekly prompts, um, because since we were always so busy studying for APs and also there was no announcements, it was kinda difficult to balance it. Um, but we overcame that and that wasn't necessarily a negative. It was more so of a, um, a learning experience because we learned how to also balance the things that are going on within the school. Um, and also another challenge briefly was to keep the students engaged with the suggestion box, as I said previously, on how they are going to keep up with it. It was hard for us just because we had so much going on and it was kind of our first run-through throughout this whole experience that we didn't really know how to keep them engaged because it's kind of hard since they're high school students that don't really get engaged with very much besides their friends. So, it's kind of hard to do that. Um, but as I mentioned earlier, they're going to keep up with that. And I just wanna say that I'm truly grateful for this experience and what it has taught me along the way. And thank you for your time and I'm moving on to the next.
Hi, I hope you're all doing well tonight. Um, as you all know, we are approaching the final days of our high school journey. And with that comes the completion of our senior portfolios. If you don't know what those were, um, they introduced, they were introduced to us this year as part of a transition from the traditional service learning system that we had in for, I don't know, many years. Um, and this new initiative included the creation of a resume, uh, the comp, the, ooh, the compilation of artifacts throughout our entire high school career and ended with a mock interview in front of a panel of four different teachers. Uh, this experience, uh, especially in its first year, was incredibly meaningful. Um, personally, it provided me with a valuable understanding of the structure and expectations of a formal job interview, uh, which I didn't get a great one when I started working at the depot, if you know Dady. Um, and it also allowed me to assemble some important materials that I could use in the future. Um, one of the biggest highlights of the process was receiving individualized feedback and a handwritten letter from the teachers. Mine was from Mr. Hall and it was an amazing read for me, especially after having him for the past two years. Um, and it made it all that more personal and fulfilling. Um, it served, it's going to serve as a mem- uh, memorable keepsake from the final weeks of my high school career. Um, while the process was largely a success, there were some areas for growth, um, as is to be expected with any program. One of the most significant changes for the next school year is that students will begin building their portfolios starting their freshman years. Um, this will allow them to get, uh, their artifacts ready, uh, maybe one per year. And, um, it will make it significantly easier for them to, uh, fully get the process going. Another area for improvement that we had was ensuring that students had a clear understanding of exactly what they were supposed to do. Um, this awareness will naturally develop now that it is, uh, being put into place. But, um, the English department did a great job for their first year getting thrown into the deep end of this project. Um, it's really given me the confidence to say I'm ready for real-world interviews and the professional opportunities that come ahead with college and after that. And in addition to near the end of high school, tonight also marks the final meeting as us as the soon board reps. Um, and this role has had a far greater impact on me than I ever thought it would. When I first began, I was confident that I would've been able to come up here and speak to you guys very easily. And after the first day, it was very, that is not true. Um, especially after, uh, I went through my entire five-minute presentation in just about two. So, um, this position has provided, uh, supportive space for me to grow and learn all these, uh, mistakes that I can make, uh, in a controlled environment. You guys have made that really great for me. Um, one of, the only real challenging aspect of this role for me was navigating the bounce between being a peer to my fellow students and a board rep at the same time. Initially, it was, uh, pretty intimidating to present myself as the bridge between you guys and the students. But over time, I discovered that it's a really meaningful way to advocate for my peers and it even really helped me build connections, um, that I now deeply value, that I would never have gotten without this. I'm really proud to have been one of the first student board reps at Red Jacket and thank you all for supporting me through this journey. And now as we close our final chapter and I give my final address, it feels only fitting to now introduce the new student board rep for the upcoming year.
So this past year was absolutely amazing, being able to work, work with Randy. I just think back to when Mr. Bernard came to me and he's like, we wanna pilot this, this Board of Education student representatives. And they almost moved forward with us. So when he came to me at that point, I asked him, can we appoint our first two representatives? So last year, we appointed Jacob Close and, um, Payal O'Rear, and we learned a lot from that year. And for year number two, what we did was, we wanted to tighten up the process. So what we did was, we had applications go out and what we got back was, we got a total of four applicants. And obviously out of the department, we found two amazing student board education reps. We wanted to come back this year now, having our process, and roll it out again. And I just think of the amazing things that these two have done, how they've grown this position. And if you think back a couple of years ago, where we just weren't one of the first teams in the wing finger legs to pilot this, but in the entire Rochester region. So this is still new for us, but others, districts weren't even doing it. So we went from having four applicants to this year, we had nineteen. And we had nineteen very strong applicants. But there was two applicants that stood out above the rest, Wyatt Rosignol, Marissa Wakefield. And I know right now, they're gonna do an amazing job. But Michaela, Randy, like I said, it was an honor to work with you two over this past year. I really hope that you two too learn just as much from me as I learned from you. And I think this is a good ti- uh, time now to pass the torch on to Wyatt and Marissa. Come on up.
Alright, I'm gonna start off with talking about Wyatt. Um, Wyatt is a very close friend of mine and I moved back last year. He was one of the first people that I got close to. We've been friends ever since trade last year with him tutoring me till now in AP Lang where we're just hanging out. Um, Wyatt Rosignol is a very active member in the, um, of the community and has been a student at Red Jacket since pre-med. Um, he is a quad sport athlete participating in football, wrestling, outdoor trap and spring tr- the, spring trap shooting. Um, he is also the senior patrol leader of Troop Thirty-nine and is working, uh, toward his eagle. Uh, he, his leadership presence can also be seen through his participation in student council as well as being, um, a captain on wrestling team. Um, he is attending Boys State this year to learn more about the local government and practice his networking skills. Um, additionally, he plans to attend college to study engineering. He wants to consistently involve as many students as possible in partnerships with Marissa um, to determine the view of the student body on the Board of Education decision, uh, decisions. Thank you.
Marissa Wakefield is a hardworking, determined person who has had the ability and opportunity to be part of numerous groups to help not just make our school better, but our community better as well. Uh, during the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, she was given the role of jewels and on being in the Between the Lines musical. She's taken this opportunity as a learning opportunity, uh, into new possibilities and experiences. Uh, over the school year, she was also one of the three within this high school to be part of a group known as Uh, over the school year, she was also one of the three within this high school to be part of a group known as Elevating Student Voices. She took time out of her school day to go to the Wayne Finger Lakes Fosse's and join amongst other kids from other districts to talk about mental health, DEI, resources, and how to create a difference within our school to make everyone feel equal, included and valued. During this experience, she was able to improve on, on the skills of being able to talk in, into a group of people and being positive in her opinions and values. This year and going into the next, she is a part of student council. She has gone to the meeting to discuss changes or things to look forward to within our school. She is valued wanting to create the school better, looking into numerous things and having monthly meetings with Mr. George as a whole to discuss our options, our options on certain topics. She has found this very valuable because our opinions and voices as students of Red Jacket is, are being taken into consideration by you all. Finally, she applied and was accepted into a summer advocacy group with Turn Up. Being grateful for this opportunity, she is going to spend five plus hours working on specific topics that are being seen in our world today. She is going to take this knowledge into the real world and to indulge in numerous parts within our community and even outside our community to create peace and change. Overall, she is someone that values her voice and her beliefs, wanting to create an impact and a difference. She wants to ensure that this opportunity is not just focusing on our personal problems and values on behalf of her and Wyatt, but to ensure that every student has a voice and the opportunity to feel accepted, valued, understood and have the opportunity to succeed.
Alright. Sure, yeah, well, um, so great job to all of you. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you both. Hope you have an excellent summer and then I think July, I guess, so we'll see you this summer. Um, I'm sure we'll get you all the information. We'll do a swearing in and we'll start to get you up to speed. And I look forward to working with you both, so thank you all. What a fantastic, uh, um, development through this whole program and we really appreciate you all. Any thoughts? You guys get a chance to share or I don't wanna include anyone on the board from, you know.
No, I just, I thank you both. You guys did such a good job this year. I was saying earlier that I don't know that I could have done that at your age. And you just so much growth over the course of the year and we're, it's always a highlight of, of the board meeting for most of us. Um, so thank you so much and we can't wait to see what wonderful things you guys do.
Thank you.
Alright, very good. Um, we're gonna continue with our presentations here. We have an update from the athletic department.
I feel like tonight has been all about celebrations and just positivity. Um, so I thank you for the opportunity to come and share some highlights and positivity from our athletic season. Uh, when I originally sat down to start working on this, this, uh, for this evening, I was reminded of all of the good things that our student athletes do, um, all of the things that our coaches do, our community members, sports boosters, parents and everything. Um, and then as I was kind of working through some of the seasons and the integrity of some of the information that I know I had to share with you all, um, I remembered that I wasn't here for three months and I felt like I had this hole of information. Um, but then I was able to go back and remind myself that we have such a strong team of people here and such support system that people took care of everything while I was out. It was actually kind of nice. You know, I wasn't just sitting at home being a new mom. It was being an observer of everything that was going on within our, our fall season and our winter season. Um, so that was kind of a unique opportunity for me this, for this year. So just some things, I'll go through our season highlights, some of the accolades that we have, talk about some of the partnerships and collaborations that we did. Um, I know last summer we worked on some handbook revisions and I just wanted to talk about those and looking ahead for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. These next few slides are gonna look really, really busy, um, but these are some of the numbers that we like to always kind of monitor. Mr. Bernard has a leadership team every year come up with goals that we wanna work on. And one of my main goals from year to year is always tracking the numbers, what we get for our sports teams. Um, obviously without numbers, without participants, some teams wouldn't be able to be possible, right? None of the teams would be able to be possible. So I think that this data is extremely important to always be monitoring what trends we're seeing. Um, kind of working with some of the youth organizations, seeing what trends they're seeing as we work our way up the elementary school and the middle school. And, you know, where are the disconnects if we're losing kids? What's been going on? Or, you know, all the things that we can highlight for the positivity if we see a significant increase. Um, so this is fall. Overall, we had a really successful fall season. Um, in terms of numbers, the only decrease that we saw at all was our game day cheer. Um, for those of you that are not aware, we, section five transitioned into what is now called game day cheer for the fall, which is more about, um, correct me if I'm wrong, engaging the crowd versus entertaining the crowd. I'm stealing some words from our coach. Um, it kind of goes back to that older style of cheerleading that we used to see. I always kind of, um, compare it to what, like the movie Grease. When they're at the paparazzi and that's what cheerleading, when you think cheerleading when it started, that's what it used to be. And that's what game day cheerleading is. Um, so I know when this started, some of our, our participants, some of our athletes were not excited for it. So I do believe that that is why we lost a few participants from there. Um, but then if you look at winter, I remind you, it'll be on the next slide, you will see that competitive cheerleading may have had, um, a sudden increase in our, in our numbers. So going into winter, again, we're kind of seeing the ups and flows. Girls' basketball, we saw a slight decrease in JV. Same thing with boys' basketball. Um, I believe that a lot of that has had to do with the term of how many seniors that we graduated. Where we then had to kind of fluctuate some things and also people opt into varsity teams in order to be able to field those teams and have comfortable numbers where these kids can put a state, in a safe manner. Um, wrestling, our numbers have been blowing everything out of the water. We have been able to, um, send kids to both JV tournaments as well as varsity tournaments, tournaments without having a sanctioned JV team because our numbers had been increasing so much. Which is a great thing for our wrestling program. Carrying on with winter, um, as you can see, cheerleading, we had an increase for those mod A kids. Um, varsity really honestly stayed exactly the same. Indoor track went down slightly for modify, oh, I'm sorry, it went down significantly for modified. Um, we only had two kids sign up this year for modified indoor track. We did end up just because of that, the budgeting, transportation, it just doesn't make sense. Um, we were able to test them through the APD process. One of those kids was able to get up and move up to varsity and he has been very successful within the varsity program. Um, and the other student actually decided, I didn't really wanna participate in this anyways, and she set herself up. Um, which is fine, she, she learned. Um, and then we had our varsity numbers which were astronomical going all the way up to thirty-three. And then finalizing, um, our entire twenty-four, twenty-five spring season or athletic school year, um, our numbers kind of dropped a little bit. As you can see, we had a decrease for, uh, varsity baseball. That was due to the amount of seniors that we lost last year. Um, but our modified numbers have been very healthy. Our JV numbers have been very healthy, so I do think that our trend will continue back upwards next year. Softball, same thing. Um, these last few classes that we've had, we just don't have the ratio of male athletes to female athletes. Um, this current senior class has very few female athletes. Um, so that does, I think, speak to some of the numbers and some of what we're seeing. And then we have track. It does slightly trend downwards. I'm not worried. Our track program is very strong. It's very successful. Um, and they do a lot of recruiting efforts. I've sent out some interest forms to some of our incoming grades that are going up. You know, the six go seven, seven go eight and, and so forth. Um, and I've already got a lot of kids saying that they're ready to sign up for modified indoor track, modified outdoor track, modified cross-country, the further from those running sports that we've seen a little decline in. So now some of the highlights that we've seen this year. Fall season, very active, very healthy. We had seven merged athletes between our merge opportunities with Midlake in the fall. We had four participants, participants going over to Boys Soccer, um, which is one of the, since I, my time being here, this was the most mod athletes that we've been able to send over there. Um, they all did participate on the modified team. They all had very successful, positive experiences, um, which I think was great. And then we had three kids go over to girls' women diving. Same thing, very popular, um, very successful seasons. Our game day cheerleading squad, correct me if I'm wrong, this is five years, do you remember? Were the, um, five years in a row Wayne Finger Lakes League champions for the fall season. Okay, make sure, which is a great accolade that we got. Um, we had our senior golfer. This was the first year that we've ever had a, um, our, our varsity golf team. We had nine participants and senior Nate Close qualified for sectionals. The way it already does the golf season is it falls in, in the fall, but then the sectionals don't happen until the spring. So he did have a little bit, um, oh, oh yeah, he stayed healthy with all his other sports and everything that he does. Um, and then come spring when we were able to get back out onto golf courses, him and coach and some of the other players were able to go out and practice, get back into his skills and prepare. He did have a rocky start to the sectional tee time. Um, first few holes were very, very rough, but he was able to pull through and I can't remember what his ending score was, but he missed it by three, um, to qualify to move forward. Um, so very successful. We were very proud of him.
Do you know if there's any, sorry to interrupt you, but I'm just very curious, do you know, has there ever been chatter about whether that's a practical way to handle the execution of the golf season? Or is there just practical reasons for that and we don't see them changing?
That's a great question. I don't necessarily have an answer for you right now. Um, being newer to the athletic tournament world, I don't recall ever hearing any conversation with that. Um, it's one of those things, I don't know why the league, our league does it that way.
It seems unfortunate for that, sure, and I don't know much about it either. It just seems unfortunate for that student to have had their season and then to come back around after so much else has happened and then jump back and interesting, okay.
Yeah, and I know that the Monroe County Schools do golf as a spring sport. So I feel like that kind of puts them more at an advantage, um, which isn't necessarily fair.
Sure.
But, yeah, definitely something that's gonna be probably.
Interesting to know more about that sometime.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and then we were able to host a youth, um, youth day at one of our football games, home football games for cheerleading and youth football players. So that was exciting. So winter accolades, winter is obviously the most, um, in terms of sports teams and numbers. We had one merged athlete, very successful, Parker Lawton, senior this year, continuing on his hockey career with the Wayne Finger Lakes Panthers, which is hosted by Geneva. Um, there are, I wanna say there's over seven schools that are all a part of this merger. Um, in order to formulate this team, they had a great season and I know Parker was very appreciative of that opportunity. Uh, we had two dual participants, our cheerleaders again, were Wayne Finger Lakes now for the competitive cheer season champions. We were able to host the league championship this year, um, which was a great turnout. It's really fun. It's an exciting day to watch all of the league teams coming in and competing and cheering and showing off their routines. Um, we had Truman Hill, indoor track and field, section five champion for shot put. We were able to host basketball youth nights. Tristan Bellis qualified for states for wrestling, um, basketball tournaments, wrestling tournaments, cheer tournaments, cheerleading leagues. Winter season was busy, but it was all really exciting and good stuff. And then our spring season that just wrapped up, um, more accolades to kind of throw out. We had two merged athletes with Midlake's, going back to Midlake's for Boys Lacrosse. Um, we did get some unfortunate news that we were not able to work with them this year for those varsity lacrosse program. For those of you that don't know, merged sports for the host school, it kind of, it goes by bed's numbers, um, where what it can do is bump teams up in classification. Um, so if the host school is not comfortable with or doesn't feel that that merger is going to benefit them, in this case, we were going to get bumped up, I believe, to Class A or Double A, which was not going to be a successful season for that lacrosse program at that time. Midlake's had healthier numbers. They didn't necessarily have the need for our player that went over there that would have been on varsity. Um, so they unfortunately had to make the decision to cut ties for the varsity program, but they did still welcome our two modified athletes that went over there. Um, Midlake's is very adamant that we will be able to reconnect and have that merger for the varsity program as our kids continue to go up, um, for the next spring season. So that's, they're very promising. Um, we had two section five champions for outdoor track and field. Aurora Parks and Truman Hill again. Truman with the shot put and Aurora got it twice for, I always flip-flop these, the three thousand meter run and the two thousand meter ski chase, um, which was a new event for her, so that was very exciting. Um, we had Josh Lapel was a league champion for hurdles. Truman Hill was a league champion. Uh, we had softball that advanced to the quarterfinals. And if anybody was at the awards night last night, um, you were able to hear their soccer game for sectionals. We lost, but it was one of those games that we were ahead two to one, top of the sixth inning against the number one seed. And that seed was Dundee, who's always been very competitive against us. Um, and it was just really exciting to see and really magical to kind of see the, the work that those girls were able to do and, you know, hopefully come out with a win next time, but, but it was exciting. Uh, we helped at a youth softball clinic with the, um, youth softball organization. And then we had our first, uh, RJ and Helen's Sunday Day with the help of Mr. Chris Mudd. So that was very exciting too. We are sending four athletes on to their future endeavors. Um, Truman is going to play football at Lake Erie. Nate is playing golf at Lincoln University Pittsburgh at Bradford. Um, Grace is going on to the upholstery team at Alfred. And Zach is going on to play football at Alfred's Farm. So it's very exciting for all of them. Minnesota Scholar Athlete Designation. This is for teams and individuals that receive a ninety GPA or higher. You can get this honor as an individual student athlete for having that, but then teams can also be awarded that. So these were our teams that were awarded this designation this year. We also had a handful of students that got this, one season, two seasons, and some students that even got this award three seasons in a row, um, which to me speaks about the student portion of being a student athlete. Um, what we started a couple of years ago, kind of a little incentive for these kids to keep grades up and, you know, doing all the good things that they're doing. The Rochester Red Wings host a Career and Sports Day every year where they, it's kind of like a job fair. They bring in a bunch of, of panelists that talk about the different career opportunities within the athletics field. It's not just coaching, it's not just playing, it's not just being an athletic trainer, but it's the behind, behind the scenes stuff. Um, so they, they have a, a little job fair, panelists where they go and speak for about forty-five minutes or an hour. You get a ticket to the game. It's kind of a fun little experience. The kids can learn some stuff. Um, so we started doing that for our scholar athletes in this current season and that's always very well received.
Is that the first time that's, have we done that or is that something we've had before?
This is our third time, yes.
Something, I never heard about that. It sounds great.
Word is definitely starting to get out. Like I had a couple of kids this year, hey, I, I got pulled up for sectionals. Does that mean I qualified as a, as a scholar athlete? Can I go to the baseball game? And I was like, no, but, you know, it's something to work for. So I'm, I'm excited that word's starting to get out where kids are hopefully striving, you know, staying motivated to get there. Partnerships, collaboration is obviously very important, um, in order to help drive the athletic department and everything that we do. Um, I don't know if anybody remembers, but last year, last summer, Chris was able to set me up with an executive coach, Amy Reed. She did come and do a presentation to you guys all about her programming and everything that she does and, and the work that we wanted to start and selling. Um, so I did monthly meetings with her for, it was probably four or five months. Um, and then we brought her in in the summer and she did a raising winners workshop for coaches. We opened this up at this time to all fall and winter coaches. We did have ten coaches, um, attend. It was about a three, three and a half hour workshop. Collaboration, building those connections. They were able to connect and kind of bounce ideas off of each other and learn from her. Um, it was very well received and it's just exciting to kind of watch coaches doing something different other than just what they're doing on the sidelines with our student athletes. Um, so I was very proud of all the work that they did and then coming in and taking the time to go through that workshop. Um, and stuff was something that I think I would like to consider bringing back, especially, you know, coaches sometimes are always changing. Making sure that all of our coaches kind of go through this workshop so that we all kind of have the same ideas in our, you know, fostering those positive cultures within our teams. Um, feedback forms. We started this last year, sending out feedback forms to our student athletes as well as our parents and guardians at the end of every season. This just helps me further collect data on what's happening. I can't be at everything. I can't be at every practice. I can't be at every game. Um, you know, I hear probably ninety-nine percent of what is going on at all times, but there's always that one percent that we're missing. Um, so sometimes that information is coming out through these feedback forms. How are parents feeling that the coaching is going? How was their student athlete's season? Was it a positive experience for them? Was it a negative experience for them? If it was negative, why was that? Um, student athletes give them a voice to kind of speak to what their experience was, how they'd like to see things differently. Um, just gathering all of that feedback. I, I was a little discouraged this year by some of the, um, amount of feedback forms that were being filled out. Numbers seemed kind of low for the spring season. Um, a lot, we're a small school, a lot of our athletes are preseason athletes. I don't know if it's just because parents and students filled it out for the fall, filled it out for the winter, maybe they just didn't want us to fill it out for the spring. Um, I think we could do better offers in getting it out there, getting that information out there. We started out by just sending it out via parent square. Then this past year, working with Mr. Casavecca, we put it out on the district webpage. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, trying to come up with different ideas of how we continue to get this out there. Um, in our code of conduct committee meetings, Jen Spears saw something with a QR code in it and made me think, why don't I put QR codes out there? You know, parents can come to awards nights when we're doing cookies and refreshments, they can snap a picture of the QR code and bring it to that Google form and then quick fill it out, it's a, you know, a quick seven, seven question or Google form. Um, so these are all things that we would like to instill next year in hopes that we can continue to gather feedback so that we can make our programs better. And then last but not least, um, just continuing, you know, all of the positive things that we do. Youth organizations are what drives all of school's teams. Um, without youth organizations, we would significantly take a hit to our sports teams here at Red Jacket. Um, so further building all of those collaborations, football cheerleading, baseball and softball is a new partnership that we started this past spring. RJ hoops for basketball in winter, the wrestling, um, soccer. There's so many good things going on within our community that we need to continue to build those positive relationships with our coaches, myself, the athletic department of school and the outside community. Um, so continuing those youth nights and all those things that we can highlight what the little kids are doing. Um, sports summer camps, offseason work, Red Jacket Hall of Fame and, um, sports boosters. We have a new board this year, which I am seeing as a great opportunity for some new opportunities and very exciting opportunities. Last few things, we had some handbook modifications that were approved last summer. Um, the committee is going to start getting together, we've already started some conversations, start getting back together this summer to continue driving that work, just reviewing the extracurricular and athletic handbook. Some of the changes that were approved last summer going into this school year were our substance abuse guidelines, which I am proud to say we didn't even have to relook at it this year because we had no instances and that was fantastic. Um, the academic eligibility is one that I think we always have to constantly look at. Um, our process is our sheet's process, we did change it, we kind of altered it based on the committee's feedback, students' feedback, um, and teachers' feedback. Some of the things that we changed were we put a restriction on if a student is failing, excellent about classes, that they are ineligible for those five weeks, because something is telling us that they're failing, you know, five classes, we need to start working and, and see what else is going on there. Um, we don't want them off the team, we don't pick them off the team, they are still a part of the team, but they need to start working towards their grades first. Um, we changed the date in which sheets were due, just to kind of help some of the issues and the barriers that we were seeing with kids turning in sheets. Fridays historically are the day that most staff miss, the day that most students miss. So when sheets are due on Fridays, their teachers aren't here, or maybe they weren't here, they now aren't turning them in, which automatically makes them ineligible. Sometimes a kid can't help if they're not here, right? They can't help it if the teacher's not here. So we changed it that day to Wednesday. Um, so the committee and I, after we were talking a little bit, we wanted to start gathering some feedback now that we have lived a full calendar school year of this new policy or the adjusted, um, modifications. So we have feedback forms going out, um, tomorrow morning to gather some data from students, from teachers, from coaches, um, and from parents and guardians, just to kind of see if they thought that these changes were a little bit more beneficial to our student athletes. And like I said too, we were gonna continue to work and, uh, review that handbook this summer to continue finalizing the rest of it. The cave crew got kind of put on pause this year because of my time away. Uh, but this is something that we started two years ago, it was our student, um, led group for sportsmanship. Um, so starting next school year, we're gonna have the cave crew two point O. Now that I'm back, I would like to be able to continue to drive this work. Um, again, it just further gives students an opportunity to have a voice in things that are happening within the school. Um, the first cave crew members, these four that were pictured here, they helped with homecoming things, helped kind of bridge that, that gap with student council and the athletic department. Um, they helped at Special Olympics, they helped with all these different fundings. They hosted some fundraisers at soccer games with the girls breast cancer game that happened two years ago. Um, so all these different things, I want to continue that work, I want to make it bigger than what it was and I want it to be something that kids are striving to be a part of. So we have some ideas about getting representatives, um, nominated by our coaches, our CGND coaches. I want it to be grades eight through twelve, having a representative from the middle school level all the way up to varsity levels. Um, having monthly meetings and just helping to further foster positive and inclusive school cultures within our sports teams. And then last but not least, just looking ahead, for those of you that are not aware, our football team, one of the biggest changes, we have had eight man football for some years now, we are now going back to eleven man football. It will be within the Finger Lakes Independent League, we are very excited about that. Chris has been a very large driving force, um, the section five committee, um, in speaking to this, which we greatly appreciate his hand in that, um, so we're very excited for the fall. And I know a lot of the parents are excited to not have a two or three hour drive on a Friday night. Excuse me, getting home at one, two AM from Allegheny or wherever they were going. We want to always continue all of those mergers, you know, mergers are a great opportunity for our students that they can participate in their sports here, but they can go out elsewhere. Um, we are very fortunate to have the relationships that we do with Mid Lakes and having it right down the street. I have reached out to several other schools within the area, um, that would make sense for some of our athletes to be able to go to. At the moment, none of the other schools are willing to host mergers, they just don't want to, they don't have a need for it. Um, but it's always those conversations that are being had. Continue on with the Wayne Finger Lakes Panthers hockey, I got that paperwork today from Geneva. And obviously spring for boys lacrosse, and we are always looking and talking about and thinking about what other opportunities we can bring. Um, and then some special events that I just wanted to highlight that will be coming up for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We have the Bob Adel Cross Country Invitational that we host every year, this year will take place October eleventh. Um, homecoming game will be October eighteenth with Spirit Week and all the other homecoming events that happen that week. Game Day Cheer Extravaganza will be September twenty-seventh, Sports Boosters Girls Basketball Tournament in December. Myasco Basketball Tournament, um, now connected with our Hall of Fame will be at the end of December. Wrestling Tournament, and this year our wrestling coaches are adding a J, or I'm sorry, a girls tournament that Friday night, which Girls Wrestling, for those of you that don't know, is gaining so much traction and it, it's, it's grown in the past year. I can't even explain it, um, so hopefully we get some more girl participants like we used to have. And then Winter Cheer, January ninth in January. And also Cardinals.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Yeah.
And, can I guess, yeah, go ahead, please, yeah, sorry, if you, if you don't mind, I guess.
No, you're okay.
Um, on the, the substance abuse, that's fantastic that there's been no issues. But are we also, are you and Brian trying to push the kids that do have substance issues into athletics as a way of breaking out of their habits or forming new relationships with other kids that don't have those issues?
Yeah, it's definitely been conversations that I've had, that we've had. Um, you know, to stand up here and tell you that there are kids within this school that don't have substance abuse issues, that that would be not, we know that exists for our high school. Um, unfortunately, kids do become addicted to certain things that are out there, vaping is one of the biggest things that we see. Um, last year we had a few instances with vaping and it's one of those things that you want to be able to hold them accountable and following the code of conduct, obviously following the law and not engaging in these drugs and drinking and whatever it is. Uh, but you don't want to take sports away from them, because sometimes sports are that only positive thing in their life that can possibly have that glimmer of hope of keeping it together. Um, so it's definitely a conversation that we have. Part of the changes for the handbook, um, we, we changed it where it's more of a restorative approach to their first infraction if they have one, first, where, you know, there's repercussions, where they have to sit out for X amount of time, practices, games, um, but they also attend some drug, uh, counseling if they have to, whatever that might be, um, different things with Mr. George or myself, so that they can continue to get on the, up out of path, if you will. And then if there are further infractions after that for that student, um, then it kind of turns into more of a punitive, effective once. Um, still, the ultimate goal is to not have them be off their team. If a kid is getting kicked off the team for substance abuse, I, I think they're really trying, in my opinion, so.
The, the other couple of things I wanted to mention is I'm glad the emphasis on the sportsmanship is there, coming back stronger. Um, just a little bit of history, back when this, before the awards started, the sportsmanship award was the only award they would get. They would not give a sports fan or athlete a year, it was strictly a sportsmanship award and that was it.
Yeah.
It was actually donated by three, uh, Thompson Hospital nurses that lived here and worked over in Antigua. And the other thing is I'm glad to hear that, glad to see the left man football is coming back because it gives more kids more time on the field, which is what it's about. And a little bit of history, again, back in the sixties when everybody had smaller teams, the other teams around us waited to Red Jacket had enough for eleven man and they all moved to eleven man in the same year. So it's kind of neat that it's coming back with just like that.
Yeah, and it's funny, I was, um, I think I saw Tim showing you, some, a man dropped off some older yearbooks this year. I think one of them was, was from like nineteen thirty-seven and then there was a couple that's in the nineteen forties. And I love history, for any of you that don't know that, so I immediately started going through them and the first thing I always do is I look to the athletics teams and find and see what things look like, right? Um, and the first picture that I saw was, I think it was the nineteen thirty-seven football team. And it was fifteen players, you know, and we're in a time now where if you have a team of fifteen in football, you're going to lose again, because it's just not feasible to be able to play eleven men, keeping kids healthy, keeping kids out of trouble, academic eligibility, whatever might be coming that way, um, but, you know, that was, that was just something interesting. And I said to Tim, I went, oh, they only had fifteen and we had twenty-one, that's right, you know, so we're definitely working on the right things and pulling the right traction.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess finally, as presentations go, we're gonna add an update on the rebranding update.
Yeah, so as you guys know, Mr. Casavecca and I, um, as well as a couple of our board members and an entire committee of stakeholders, have spent the last two years working through the, this transition. And, uh, we're, we're excited to share tonight, um, what that branding kit is going to be, going to look like. So I'll turn it over to Chris and he can share with you a bit of the process and, uh, where we are right now.
First, I'd like to thank the board for, you know, giving the communications team at Wayne Finger Lakes Schools the opportunity to take this on and, um, Leah Balconi, she was our graphic designer, she couldn't be here tonight, but she also, uh, expresses her thanks and the committee was fantastic, um, Mrs. Carter, Mr. Van Aken, part of that committee, um, they, you know, the entire community, this is a very smooth, easy process and the input that we got from the community, um, definitely reflected. Um, but I would be presentable to you today, but first I want to open up the floor to, um, Mrs. Carter and Mr. Van Aken about your guys' experience with the committee and stuff like that.
I think you covered it, it was a really nice committee to work with. I think, uh, there was a lot of great representation of different stakeholders and a lot of great productive conversations.
Yeah, that's right, it's a lot of great conversation with the, with the depth of people we had and Randy participated as well as a, as a student. Um, yeah, it was a very positive experience. Looking forward to next year for the continuation of it.
Absolutely, now, um, so let's get right to it. Um, you can see our first logo right here is our primary full body logo, this will be the Red Jacket Cardinals logo. Um, this is going to be basically what it's going to be like on our letterheads, our, uh, what's going to be decalled on, you know, our walls and it's going to be on, you know, apparel that we have and it's going to be sent out to our booster clubs and everything else. Um, when we came to this, uh, so when we came to this graphic, um, this was after our January survey that we sent out to the community. We also sent out a progress report, I believe it was at the end of March, uh, to the community just to show like this, the feedback we gave us, this is what we got, this is a final draft. Um, and now we finally came to this. So obviously it has our Cardinal red, um, or as I call it, A forty-two, E thirty-seven, I know the committee loved when I brought that X code up. Um, so, and we-
But to that point though, that is really a important thing, because we've had conversations around how these colors have shifted at times. That's how it doesn't happen, is that when you have a, a color that you can give to contractors, you can give to painters that can come in, you can give to graphic designers, we're not going to get different shades of red, right? We're going to have our Red Jacket red, which has been designated as that number. So it's really important that, you know, that, that is, I know that sounds silly, but it is an important piece that that committee and that was brought up forward by that group because it gives us that consistency, so we don't get these variations that we've had in the past. So- Can you, on those logos, we do silkscreen, did you actually get all those different shades of red?
I'm sure. Yeah, so the way we have it is, we actually have basic logos too, so you actually see in this RJ one, it doesn't have all the shades, because for some of the apparel, like for like on the side of the helmets and stuff like that, it's very difficult to get all those different shades. It also can get costly. So we also, in addition to the multiple kind of feathered version of our Cardinal, we do have that basic just red, black, white, um, Cardinal as well. And that will all be included in our media kit. Um, so I just, again, up here, these are the two kind of just basic red ones and the two on the outside you can see has a feathered, multi-colored look, um, that has more than just that basic, uh, Cardinal red in it.
A really quick point, something I hope we'll talk about maybe just for a minute or two at the end of this, is kind of where we want to set expectations. It may or may not come from the board, but the, um, Chris and the team may need some input from us. It's like the idea of using this imagery well to ensure we're well represented, right? So using the right version of that logo depending on what type of apparel or, um, uh, you know, where the, it's being displayed. It's, it takes a little bit of, you know, understanding of how to use the right imagery in the right ways. And so we want to put a reasonable level of expectations on people using our logo without being overly restrictive. So just food for thought, as, as Chris continues, maybe we can briefly talk about how the board wants to, you know, think about that need.
So now off to our secondary logo, I told us also the athletics logo. The reason why we're going to be using just the head for athletics is because A, having that full body burn on something like a helmet will be very small. So with just the head, we're taking the exact same head from here, we just made it bigger and there goes our head logo, our secondary slash athletics logo. Again, the branding kit comes with the RJ, the Red Jacket Cardinals with the type, and it's just basic by itself. We also have like, um, a silhouette version of it, which is black and white, a, um, a watermark version of it that you could be put on like official documents and stuff like that as well. And then last but not least, oh, sorry, can't get there yet, our type logo. So if you're thinking like banners and stuff like that for either homecoming or outside of the gym, um, or even maybe right behind you on the windows there, type Red Jacket, so, and this can also get slapped on apparel as well. And then last but not least, everybody's favorite, when we came to it, meet RJ, this is our elementary logo. So, um, the hope would be, as obviously with rebranding, it's, doesn't stop, this is not the end. Um, we're already in talks with our print shop at Wayne Finger Lakes Posties to figure out what we can do to start sliding logos everywhere, um, to get this in the elementary school, so when the kids come in the fall, um, they get to meet RJ and see RJ right there in the front. Um, see a little conductor hat there, we wanted to pay a little homage to, um, you know, the everyone behind us and stuff like that. Um, because we know there's a lot of history here with, um, the railroad and we felt that, especially with our phone logo, with RJ, we can, you know, do a lot more with it than with our main district logo. And I believe that's it, I'd like to open up to, or some questions, or if there are any questions. Um, as for the distribution of our logo, I am currently working on, um, like an application that outside organizations can fill out if they want to have, uh, use of our logo. Um, obviously with copfires and stuff like that, we'd have some big official in place so that if outside organizations want to use it, um, they would just have to do something very simple where it's just fill out that application and then it would be approved by a, a member of the administration. Yeah. And then, um, a little final thing, uh, Mrs. Brown has been working on a little bit, uh, behind the scenes as we've been doing the rebranding and has a little bit of a fun announcement. Uh, you may have seen RJ on our Facebook page, we went to, um, Special Olympics, he joined our, uh, with our crew this year. And, um, Shannon, would you like to announce, uh, what you've been working on?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce you all to RJ the Cardinal. Um, yeah, you know, being a part of this committee was obviously just exciting, it was a great committee to work with and something that was near and dear to my heart because of the athletic side of it. Um, yeah, you know, being a part of this committee was obviously just exciting, it was a great committee to work with and something that was near and dear to my heart because of the athletic side of it. Um, Chris, Chris and I, we've been working a lot on opening up a, uh, store that can go out onto a district webpage, it can be open year-round, where people can purchase things with the new rebranding efforts. Um, this is going to be a great year for rebranding and just really kind of highlighting our new mascot and RJ the Cardinal.
And the store will be open-
And the store will be open as soon as I click the button on my laptop, so it'll be open tonight, if you want to go home, I'll have it on the website, but it's redjacket.com. If you look in the top right-hand side, you'll see, uh, Cardinal store, it'll also be in the, if you scroll down a little on our website, you'll see like the toolbar, you'll see the little like jersey and it'll say Cardinal store on it. And I'm also working on a hero image that when you first go to the website, it's like, our store is now open. That will hopefully be done by, uh, noon tomorrow as well, but it will be live and active in about five, ten minutes.
And I believe for the rest of the month you get twenty percent off. I have so much, and we get nothing for it, but.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you guys.
So, um. Been a little bit of a, a journey to get here, but I hope you guys, I, I for one am excited to see the progress.
The logo's great.
Hope you feel the same. Um, if I understand it, there's a, there's a thought that some of the different, for instance, athletic programs or clubs may, may want to do some novel, like, you got the store open, but there's a store, I believe, and I don't know all the deal, but it's not going to sell everything people might want. There's going to be an expectation that different groups might kind of have a little bit of a niche in terms of what we-
Yeah, the store will be, the, the store's developed to have like any-time options, right? So you can get the things that you want, so it's not just, we're not handcuffed by seasons. But it will still have specialty items that are good for those particular seasons, mu- music winsters and different groups that want to say like, this is special to our sport. You know, I'll make it up, like wrestlers all, you know, say, everybody on wrestling wants to wear slige, those slige sandals. Like those type of specialty items will still be there for those athletic teams to make some funds and, and they have some funding and fundraising opportunities, so. But the, one of the big impacts that we've continually get is making this so that people can get it all the time. So if my, if, if my dad's birthday is in April, I don't have to wait for the, you know, or, or December, I can get them in April. So it's really about having that access. And if you look at a lot of other schools around us, they have this option on their website year-round. So that's the goal, is to have it year-round, we'll monitor, uh, we'll work with our groups to make sure that it's not taking away from their fundraising opportunities and we'll keep it that.
The, uh, the actual cost of say a shirt, is there a markup on that shirt and where does the profit go to from the sale of the shirt? Or are we selling that cost or how is that?
So Shannon can speak to it a little bit better, but I will, no, I, we'll double check, but they're asking questions around the, uh, where does, where does the money go for us when we get the, when, when someone purchases a shirt? How much do we get and what does it go towards? Because the district does get something from it, correct?
I believe there was a ten percent, you're questioning me on the user agreement, I don't remember.
Yeah, we'll check, we'll check.
We'll check, we'll find a way to figure out for you.
There is a user agreement that the district gets some of it and then we can apply it back to other things with that company like uniforms and stuff like that. But I'll, I'll, I'll send an update in port to-
So if we had something like, uh, youth soccer, and instead of the youth soccer, people buying a bunch of jerseys every year and, um, we can actually run it through the store? That way we don't have excess inventory floating around from year to year.
I'll, I'll-
I suspect that may depend on what they're upselling, but maybe that's a better, broader conversation about what are the channels for like, like, cause Shannon would buy uniforms, right? I don't know what that, that may or may not go through the store, but it would be an interesting conversation as to how could, how could the fact that this is being stood up be a further benefit to other groups, is that?
Well, it'd be easier for the control and it'd be less costly for the other groups.
I'll look at it, I'll look at a good follow-up conversation. Yep, and, and Chris mentioned, uh, there's going to be a form that we expect groups to fill out if they want to use the logo. And my personal opinion is that's, that's a great step to help drive some consistency, because the more consistent we use the brand, the more powerful it is, the better value it has to the district and build success community and stuff. I personally see, you probably see it too, it was years past, stuff all over the map, far as quality, various logos, how it's applied, sizing, distortions, you know, was that?
Said I already saw it, Red Jacket Cardinal on a shirt.
Yeah, and there's some ones that aren't, when we saw it there and, you know, I think, it, it's fine because there hasn't really been a right way to do it. But our goal is to put in place a system that says, here's the imagery, here's how you use it, here's how it's applied, let us give you some guidance. There's still going to be, you know, groups, people that want to do it, go their own way, can't prevent all of that, but, um, how do we keep a reasonable check on that so that the brand stays consistent? I think it's, you know, so that may come up, hopefully it's all, hopefully we can, um, the store and all that stuff will help to do some of that. Okay, uh, let me keep us moving here. Any final thoughts, questions? Alright, if Chris left, did Chris leave? I wonder, oh, Chris, I just wanted to say thanks, um, for the branding work, I know you have some colleagues that were part of that. Um, but I want to just mention the board, like, maybe you've seen this too, but feel like no matter what event I go to, no matter what building, time of day, night, um, you have a, a clearly a really good strategy of how to be in the right places at the right times. Because it seems like every time I look up, it was a music concert, it was an award ceremony, uh, Chris finds ways to be there. All this stuff on, um, Facebook, I don't know if there's other social media, but things like that that go out, the communications, I mean, that's pretty much all, uh, driven by, uh, Chris's, uh, work. So I'm, I for one have been very, very impressed, I just want to say thank you for that on all the different fronts, so, um, great work.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, you got it, alright, um, that's it for our presentations and, which brings us to CSE and CPSE. So I'll go ahead and, uh, read the resolution here. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the CSE and CPSE recommendations as presented. Motion from Chelsea, thank you, and a second, Barb, awesome, um, any questions for Karen? Karen, I think, from what I understand, this is kind of a busy season for you.
Yeah, I think it is, we're kind of busy season today, having a couple of senior meetings, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I recognize this pattern where we, we don't often have a lot of questions at the meeting. I'm sure you don't mind, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, we all recognize how much goes on in that realm and, uh, appreciate at least a couple of times a year. If we don't have questions here, you usually do a little bit of education for us at times, so, so, you know.
Great meetings, that's really all I can say about our teams and our parents, it's been great, so.
Good, good, very good, well, thank you very much for all that your department does. And, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and vote, um, with respect to the, uh, CSE and CPSE report, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Um, motion carries, thank you, thank you Karen. Um, committee updates, I know we've, we've already covered branding, of course, what else do we have? We have policy committee, Matt, yeah.
John, we don't, we didn't have anything on the email.
The-
Capital project?
Capital, okay, Kodak, is that something?
Kodak is, you know, the draft is wrapped up, um, the board will get a, a draft of that at the July meeting that has the content changes, it'll be redlined. And the, the board is preferred to see the changes, so it'll be redlined, it won't be in a final, like, graphic design format, because that, that would come in August. But we have to, um, legally let the board review it and then get a thirty-day span before it's actually approved, which then will happen at the office board meeting. So at the re-reading on July tenth, you will get a content version of the updates. And then at the board meeting in August, you will see the final version and at that point look on through the graphic design process. And then that you gotta go out to families, um, prior to the start of the spring.
And for policy committee, Chris had sent out an email with all of the policies we were reviewing tonight. And all are getting pushed through except for two that we're going to bring back. One is the user email on the district, just going to get some, um, we have the tech team review it and see if we can do any custom, if there's any customization required. Um, and then there's one we think we already have an updated version in place, we're just confirming that's going to be replaced by it's providing help.
Other than that, most of them were pretty routine, uh, as far as being driven by state law, various flavors, Scott, you want to add anything? Okay, so, uh, not a whole lot for us to change in there, they're pretty technical policies, but, uh, yeah, thank you, Jen.
We kind of watch, so.
Yeah, and our feedback from Justine, our representative from the, um, Erie Bosse's Policy Service was that they are making excellent progress in terms of working our way through our entire, like, our, our policy catalog, if you will, and the audit that was done. So, um, I've, I've learned a ton, actually, it's not the most riveting, uh, material, but, um, you learn a lot. If you want to learn a lot, be on the policy committee, maybe we'll, we should make a recommendation for it, we've been looking on it going forward. We're, we're all coming back this time around, I feel like that should be like a rite of passage or something, because you learn a lot about what the policies kind of look and flow like, so. Um, great work to that committee and that group.
Yeah, we're getting close to what, thirty plus, thirty-five policies we've been through.
Yeah, yeah, and some of them are, they vary in size, so, cool. Alright, um, any other thoughts from the little updates? Randy, you almost looked like you wanted to say something earlier, did you get, I think you wanted to add?
Uh, no, it's just, it was a great, um, process and I'm happy that we were able to meet with, uh, Leah and have, uh, one-on-one talk with her about the actual branding of it.
Cool, cool, well, thank you, excellent, um, sounds like it was a good experience from all of them. Excellent, well, that brings us to the spring, now we'll turn it over to Penn Bernard.
Yeah, thank you, I just have a brief update tonight, kind of recapping the last months and the spark meeting and all of this, you know, occurring across our districts. As we approach the close of another school year, I'd just like to take a moment to reflect on the energy that is maintained throughout our district, the accomplishments that happened throughout the spring. And many of the memorable moments that will, that will make lifelong memories for our students and staff. The spring season has been extraordinary, our music department kicked it off across the district showcasing their talent and dedication through a series of spring concerts. That were both inspiring and showing the hard work and dedication. From elementary chorus to high school bands, these performances highlighted not only the incredible skill of our students, but also the passion and the guidance of our staff. These events remind me and all of us, hopefully, the power of the arts in bringing our communities together and nurturing a creative and, and new experience for our students. On the athletic front, we celebrated the conclusion of our spring sports season with our annual sports banquet last night. This event capped off weeks of dedication, a focus on sportsmanship and impressive achievements from our student athletes. Whether on the field, the track, our teams demonstrated resilience, heart and supportive commitment, and our supportive and committed coaches also supported and shown last night by our enthusiastic families who attended. And supported their students throughout this process, some of them for the past ten, twelve years. The spring season always carries with it a swirl of excitement and emotion. To me, it always reminds me of December because of the level of excitement and the level of, um, just organized chaos that tends to roll in the month of June and December. Um, it's also a reminder of how quickly time passes and when you think about it, it felt like fifteen minutes ago was September and we were sitting here kicking off a new school year. Um, but not only that, it also shows how quickly the, the career of our students goes, we go, when you watch Randy and Michaela get ready to go on to the next step. Um, and I know some of us at this table have experienced that personally or will be experiencing that this year. So, um, it's just a reminder that these culminating events are more than just celebrations for our students and our staff. They're milestones that mark progress, growth and things that we're going to remember forever and that our students are going to take with them wherever they go. As we look forward to the final days of our academic year, I want to express my deep gratitude to all of our students, all of our educators, coach, staff members and our families. As well as our Board of Education who make the spring season and the year so special, meaningful and successful. Um, the energy, care and commitment that all of you bring to our schools are, are what make not only just the end of the year, but our full school year a special time. Thank you for the hard work that you pour into our district and being the heartbeat of everything that we do. You know, we had, um, a lot of variables as a school district that we worked through this year, some were anticipated and many were not anticipated. So I can't say enough to our leadership team, um, to the board, um, the work that we've accomplished and, um, not forgetting to celebrate it. And I think tonight was a good reminder of that, so, thank you.
Excellent, any questions?
Can I say one thing real quick, um, this, the online store is already inundated with too many requests and nobody can get on it now, but it says, too many requests. Very impressive, just got that message, so many people are on it right now, so that's just exciting.
Did something go out to prompt people because like?
Parents were.
Oh, okay, I was saying, like, why are the people on our website?
Might need a follow-up announcement, try, keep trying.
Keep trying.
Um, excellent, well, thank you very much for that. Um, we have a placeholder here for Board of Education annual goals, speaking of time flies, it feels like every time this meeting shows up, it's like, gosh, I always want to say more, but we've done an excellent job with the goals. And, um, one of the things we're working through right now, for those who might be interested, as you all know, we've, uh, we're working on a Board of Education self-assessment, so thank you all for that. And we'll work through that, um, you know, in detail, uh, later this month, so. Yep, um, any questions, comments, um, board goals or anything like that? Alright, that's all, I'm going to keep that one short and sweet, we got a lot going on here tonight. Um, next section is financial reports, you got your treasurer's report in your packet, any questions there? Go ahead and accept that on behalf of the board. And which brings us to new business, we got a few items. First one is, nine A is policy. So these are the policies that were reviewed in the, uh, a prior policy committee meeting. And then we brought them up, I believe, although actually, I don't know, you all brought, may have brought them up in the last meeting, does that make sense? Okay, and so you've got, uh, let's see, almost seven or eight, nine different policies there. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution and at this point we're going to go ahead and vote on those policies, so. Um, or let me, let me first ask, is there anyone have any concerns with that? I know you've had a couple of chances now to review and all that, so I think we're good, but if I'm mistaken, okay. Uh, okay, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the waiving of the sec, of the second reading. And approves policy thirty-four twenty, fifty-one thirty, fifty-two thirty, buck fifty-four thirteen, five-five-five-one, five-six-three-zero, five-six-four-zero, six-one-five-zero as presented. Motion, Jen, thank you, and a second from Matt. Any further questions on those policies or what we're voting on or anything like that? Alright, well, great job on all that, and we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, excellent, thank you. Um, we have a separate resolution which is retiring some policies, I'm not sure how much you talked about it the last meeting, but essentially they were made irrelevant because I think in most cases the information was in other policies or obsolete for some reason. Um, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the waiving of the second reading and retires policy five-one-five-zero and five-two-four-zero as presented. Uh, motion, Chelsea, and a second from Scott, thank you, any questions on this one? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, excellent. Um, we have an intermunicipal resolution. This says data privacy and a number of other things, um, it was a valid on the website, yep, Bosse's. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and read it and then we can make a profit needed. Uh, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the intermunicipal amendment with RIC one Risk Operations Center. Uh, do you have a motion for that? Chelsea, and a second from Matt, thank you. Um, I think we were reviewing something we typically participated in, right?
We did, started this past year, so we, we did one to be here when it first came out, this is the rule for the next year.
Okay, um, any further questions? All in, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, excellent. Um, we are approving a contract for a construction manager for our capital project getting off the ground here. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the watchdog LLC contract for the twenty-twenty-four capital improvement project, um, per the attached resolution. Um, can I get a motion for that? Matt, and a second? Chelsea, thank you, okay, any questions on hiring watchdog as our construction manager?
Just that, uh, that cost is in line with the SMS.
You feeling good about that?
Yeah.
I, for good things, uh, I know they do a lot of work in the internet. Alright, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, very good. Um, annual transfer to reserve funds. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the superintendent to move up to four hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars from the unappropriated fund balance to the bus purchase reserve. Uh, one point, one million, five hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars from the unapproved fund balance to the capital- from the unapproved fund balance to the capital reserve for future projects, thirty thousand dollars from the unappropriated fund balance to the retirement contribution reserve, and thirty-five thousand dollars from the unappropriated fund balance to the unemployment insurance revert, reserve. Um, do we have a motion, a second, and then we can have plenty of conversation about that if you'd like, is there a motion? Matt, second, Amy? We'll let Tim catch up for a second here, because he's gonna answer our questions, I'm good. All right, uh, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, I have, I have got a question. Uh, Tim, when you had, like, last year when we had the, the water pump issue, and it was, it was like eighty grand for the water damage, where would you pull, where did you pull that out? Did you transfer, or is there a different fund for that?
Well, it was just insurance, so we just had to pay the deductible, but next year with the higher deductible, if we have a bunch of occurrences, then we could make a bold resolution and transfer money from the repair reserve.
So we can fut, in the future, if we have, if we're in emergency, we can transfer funds over, we don't have to set up a separate, uh, reserve, or-
We have a repair, yeah, we have a repair reserve that, what, could you use the cover of that?
Okay, that's the only question I have.
All right, with all of that, we'll vote, all in favor, aye, any opposed? None, motion carries. And we were, are gonna go ahead and actually approve all the great work we saw there for the logos. Uh, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and pursuant to education law, approves the branding committee recommendation for the official Red Jacket Cardinal logos. Motion from Chelsea, and a second from Scott. This is perfect, um, any questions or thoughts there? I think we have, obviously a big presentation already. All right, all in favor, aye, any opposed? None, motion carries, excellent.
I said hopefully not, because the parents bar went out.
The site's fragile, so.
Yeah, that could have been dangerous.
I tried to go on.
We could leave the vibe in here, but secretly, that was probably the right thing to do. Um, okay, uh, one more item here on new business. Uh, acknowledgement of the High School Musical, there's not actually a vote here, but if you had a chance to read through, um, kind of a neat selection on the musical, uh, do, does someone else wanna talk about that, or do you wanna?
No, so you got, um, we talked about this last year, we started a process around, um, the board acknowledging, um, the musical not as intentional, so that there's just an awareness of what, um, the musical will be, and who it should be targeted for. And, um, so this year, the, the target is a little bit wide, more widespread, and, and you'll see it's like, you're a good man, um, Charlie Brown, and the hope then is that we can hopefully tie in some things that we weren't able to last year, only offered one musical. Um, this year was targeted more at the high school level, the feedback to the musical team was to make that a little bit more widespread for this year, and they accomplished that in this, and hopefully we'll be able to utilize some of our middle, uh, middle school and elementary students, um, in the musical. So, uh, we started that process last year, it goes through, uh, building principals, and then comes the district office, and then we approve, and then the board acknowledges that next step.
Will there be any bulk people in this play?
There's a part, potentially.
I've always wanted to be in the play.
Tim's been in the play.
Everybody heard him say it.
No.
There's precedent, be careful with you. All right, well, um, any thoughts, final thoughts? Um, that concludes then the, uh, public portion of our meeting, we're gonna have a, I'm gonna actually move us into a brief executive section, or I should say-